The February 22 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission is now called to order and we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
No, Madam Chair.
We will. Is there anybody online by any chance who wants to make public comment? Do you see anybody online?
There's an individual by the name of Ron Wallace.
Can we find out? Mr. Wallace, would you like to make a public comment? Mr. Wallace? I'm not hearing him. He is trying to talk, but...
Oh, maybe he needs to unmute. Or you need to let him in or something.
And maybe he wants to...
We will open the public comment period. Mr. Wallace, would you like to make a comment about an item not on the agenda today but within the subject purview of the Planning Commission? So, not hearing anything, we are going to close the public comment portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda, which has no items. So, we will move directly to the regular agenda. Item A1, Proposed Ordinance to repeal the cannabis background clearance badge program. And let our planning director take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Even though my name is on this report, this is actually Mr. Oliver's report.
Ole.
I mean allegedly. But it's gonna be his presentation is what I'm trying to say because even, yeah, Title 17 is in our zoning code, but it's complicated. Doug, please, take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners and esteemed colleagues.
It's on.
It's on. Okay. We good? Excellent. Okay, so, yes, what we're bringing to your commission for consideration is a resolution and ordinance change. The ordinance change would be to repeal two sections of Title 17 related to something much larger in Title IX. So, I won't burden you with the extended background of the cannabis program, but I will say that essentially on September 12 of this year, the Board of Supervisors directed cannabis control to eliminate section or Chapter 9.22 of county ordinance, which was the cannabis clearance badge program, which was intended to do background checks and provide identification of those who have cleared those background checks in relation to cannabis operations. We have that ordinance change drafted, but because we're removing that, there's two components of Title 17 that direct the public to seek those clearance badges. And so, what we're bringing to you is a proposal to eliminate those sections so that it closes the books entirely on the background clearance badges. So specifically, 17.91.090, operating restrictions for cannabis retailers. All owners and workers, as these terms are defined in Chapter 9.22 of the county code, shall have and maintain current valid cannabis background clearance badges whenever engaging any commercial cannabis activity on the premises and shall comply with all the provisions of Chapter 9.22. And addition, 17.95.080, cannabis testing permit and cannabis distributor permit operating restrictions. Similar language directs you directly to 9.22, which will no longer be in existence. Now, the reason for the Board to direct us to sunset 9.22 is because, one, there's already a background clearance check for the state license, and what this is, is duplication. In addition, there's no significant effect to the safety on a site by having these clearance badges. As we've discovered in the last four years of managing this program, we've issued around 700 clearance badges. We've only ever denied two. And what we found is the business owners on these cannabis sites, they're legitimate permitted businesses. They don't want criminals working for them. There's typically not any issues with the wrong people on a license to grow. So, those two things working together, the Board's direction was, let's just get rid of this, which basically means that we are relying on the state issuing their permit to have vetted the people who are owning these cannabis grows. I mean, that's the long and the short of it for this presentation. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna get, make sure I'm straight on a few things. Am I right that the state background provisions do not apply to workers?
That's, go ahead.
I believe that's correct. Yes, the state background provisions apply to owners and operators, but not workers, whereas the county program applied to anybody who was going to be on the site.
Well, the state provisions that I've looked at appear to, in its terms, only apply to owners, but then broadly defines that term to include Board of Directors and people actually managing the site and this sort of thing. But I think the term owners is the only thing that the state statute covers.
I think that may be correct, but as you just stated, it's sort of an expansive category of folks.
Yeah.
But yes.
Okay. And so, our zoning code currently has no background clearance provisions regarding cannabis cultivation, right?
And Doug, feel free to jump in or contradict me. So, I think while Chapter 9.22 absolutely applies to cultivators and cultivation sites as well as retailers and dispensaries, it's correct that in 1791 and 1795, we don't, it doesn't mention that requirement in the context of cultivation. And I don't know why. But, yes, so 9.22 does apply to cultivation. That said, the only two references here are the ones identified.
And then, so we're recommending the zoning ordinances, which provide background clearance provisions as to, we're recommending the repeal of the provisions that apply to testing, distribution, and retailing. Correct.
Correct.
Let the record show.
Correct.
Yeah, let the record show that was naughty.
Basically, you know, as Mr. Oliver indicated, the Board has directed him to bring forward a repeal of Chapter 9.22. This is just really cleaning up the zoning code by deleting the two references to it.
And once, once the Board repeals 9.22 and pursuant to our recommendations, repeals 17.91.090C and 17.95.080C, will there be any provisions in the county code for background checks and clearance badges relating to commercial cannabis operations?
No.
No, not explicitly.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the state background clearances already applies both to cultivators and to all of the things that are mentioned in our sections that didn't mention cultivation for some reason.
Right, right. So, any license type...
We're not removing any requirement for a background check on cultivation.
Well, no, we're...
There's no intention. We're just cleaning up these two...
To be clear, in the context of this item...
Yes.
We're removing redundancy in the system by removing our license, our background check, because the state already has one.
Except the state doesn't have it as to workers.
Yes.
Correct. But in this context, this doesn't address, so, the reason why it's only identified in this limited scope in Title 17 is because anyone seeking to comply with the zoning would be the owners or operators, not, you know, not the employees. 179, sorry, 9.22 was meant to apply to anyone who was participating at any level in any cannabis activity. So, employees wouldn't necessarily have to comply with zoning in this strict context.
Are there any other questions?
I'm gonna distribute to make things a little easier when we get to the resolution.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion on this item. We'll go back to the commissioners and pass out some proposed language changes.
I hope I have enough copies of this.
I think there's plenty. Okay, this applies to the resolution?
Yeah.
Under evidence.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sure.
The recommendation on the first sentence, I don't know if is accurate because this isn't an amendment, this is a repeal. And I don't know if we can...
Well, that's fine if we wanna put, I mean, a repeal is an amendment, but it's, but...
Yeah, I think, I think either, you're right, it is a repeal, but a repeal is a form of an amendment, so either word works.
I think somewhere else in the resolution, it was talking about the amendment.
Okay, I just, I, when, I've, my training in writing these resolutions is if you use one word, we like to repeat it all the way through for...
I think, it is...
It doesn't matter to me if that's acceptable.
It's amending section, it's amending chapters 791 and 795 to remove a subsection of each...
Repealing a particular requirement.
Yes.
That's a lot of words for repeal, though.
Yeah. I'd be perfectly happy with repeal, but I think amendment was used somewhere else in the resolution.
Very well.
But most, more importantly, though, do you agree with striking out cultivation in that, in that first sentence, Doug?
The reason I struck out cultivation is that we are not repealing anything or recommending repeal of anything that applies to cultivation.
I wanted to confirm it because he's the, he's the one in charge of cannabis.
I think Commissioner Ladish has just modified it to parallel the existing language so that we're repealing what's actually there and not adding or modifying anything in it, which does seem like...
Yeah, I have no objections to the first sentence. Let me get into the third a little more here.
And it is the Department of Cannabis Control, not the Division.
It's actually not even a department anymore.
Oh, really?
It's, it's the, oh, okay, I'm sorry, California Department, yeah. No, that's, that's correct.
I...
It's confusing when there's multiple, you know, cannabis controls.
Yeah. We know there are lots. I just wanted to be clear in the first sentence that all we're dealing with is, and that we are dealing with testing, distributing, and retailing permits.
However, this isn't clear to me in the new language that we're eliminating the background check for everybody, and I think that is the point, that as to owners refers to the duplication.
Right.
But we're also just eliminating it for everybody else.
Correct.
And it should say owners as defined in the section, the state section. State definition, right? So...
That would be fine.
But, but we're also eliminating it for everybody else, so we would have to...
Well, I, I...
We need to be clear, we're eliminating it entirely.
The only duplication...
I understand.
Is the reason, I think it's important that it's, the only duplication we're eliminating is as to owners.
Right. So, maybe, maybe we need, what we need to do is kind of add on to the sentence to say something to the effect of, "The proposed ordinance amendment is intended to streamline county cannabis permit regulations by eliminating background checks or the background check requirement," or something like that.
The local background.
Correct. And then new sentence that says something like, you know, or "As it is duplicative of the state's requirement for owners and operators," something along those, or "Owners as defined by state law," something along those lines.
Isn't it fun to come to the Planning Commission?
Love it.
Did you write that down?
I actually like this stuff.
Well, are we thinking too broad because only, only as it pertains to these two code sections, everything else that's being removed is being removed because of 9.22, which isn't, isn't the focus of this meeting today.
And that, and I think that's an important point, Mr. Oliver. I do, I do think that these findings were probably drafted with the larger picture in mind, which is that the Board, I believe, you know, intends to repeal Chapter 9.22. So, yeah, I think that's part of the problem here is that this is kind of...
Well, I'd be happy if you wanna redraft the first sentence. I do think having owners as defined in the state statute is a good idea.
Okay.
Although, we didn't define that in our, well, no, I guess we did, in our, in our ordinance.
Yeah.
But we need to, we need to make sure that what, we state that what we're doing applies to testing, distributing, and retailing permits.
I don't have any issue with that. I just think we, all we really need, we just need to make sure we're only talking about the two sections.
Right.
That, yes.
That's what I was...
Well, and to that point, I mean, then arguably, the finding should be, "This is intended to clean up unnecessary, language rendered unnecessary by the..."
Exactly.
Why don't we just, yeah, why don't we just change that?
Well, we could, I mean, we could then say something, "I think the finding that the amendments are consistent with the general plan is still valid."
Right.
But the evidence would be that this is cleanup rendered necessary by that.
Yeah, I, we're probably, because we have so little on our agenda today, becoming a tad obsessive.
I'm happy to leave it to the county council to come up with language to replace the first sentence. I was trying to amend it as little as possible.
Yeah. I think that's exactly, our point just needs to be, we're removing these two things for this reason.
And make, make clear that workers are being eliminated from coverage and owners as defined in the state, we're eliminating the duplication.
Okay. I don't think we need to say anything about the workers. I'm gonna go back on what I was thinking, because they're not mentioned in the original.
They've mentioned in the ordinance.
No.
Not in this ordinance.
Not in the two things that we're talking about, though they are mentioned.
They're mentioned in Chapter 9.22, they are not mentioned in these provisions of the zoning code.
The two, yes.
That are actually before the Planning Commission's...
Exactly. The only two things we're amending. We need to stick to what the two items were amending. The rest of it's outside of our jurisdiction.
Well, no, what we're amending, what we're eliminating starts with all owners and workers, as these terms are defined in Chapter 9.22.
Right, right.
Shall have and maintain. So, we are, we are eliminating...
But isn't that covered in these other, so we're only looking at your comments here, only apply to three.
To...
Finding three. That's the only thing we're talking about, right?
Yes, but we're referring to what we're doing.
Yeah.
And what we're doing covers workers.
For testing and retailing.
Once 9.22 goes, why, that coverage is gonna disappear, but I think it's, I know, I just didn't...
I think what you have...
I was, I was concerned that people would read this and say, "Oh, okay, workers are also covered by the state." And that's why the as to owners is, was necessary. That's the only duplication of coverage that we have here is as to owners.
But, so, I don't know that we require evidence that discusses the workers because there's that, this is talking about the duplication.
Yeah, I was only trying to amend these as little as possible.
Yes.
To be accurate. If a different approach would serve as the evidence for finding three, that's fine.
I think as long as we define owners for good, I mean, I don't have a problem with the change in wording.
Okay, so, keep the first sentence the way it is, the way I'm suggesting it to be? I'm not...
Do we need to say as to owners as defined by the state?
Yeah.
Blah, 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 yeah.
I think that would be very good.
Although, the second sentence is remaining, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, for purpose of the record, we need to read what's on this? We're looking at, we're looking at writings.
Probably.
So, I guess for purposes, and for people watching at home and people in the audience, what we're suggesting is that the first sentence of finding three on page two of the resolution be changed to say, "The proposed ordinance amendment is intended to streamline county cannabis permit regulations by eliminating as to owners as defined in whatever..."
Yeah, my, and I do apologize, we are overly fixated on this, I'll be the first to say, but I do worry that that gives the impression that it's only eliminating the local requirement for owners, when in reality, it's eliminating the local requirement for everybody. That's only dup...
Exactly.
It's only because it's duplicative. It's not duplicative for workers.
Right.
But we're eliminating it for all, not just the owners as defined by the state. So, I think instead, we need to say something more along the lines of, "The proposed ordinance amendment is intended to streamline county cannabis permit regulations by eliminating duplication, maybe eliminating the requirement for everybody." And then we can say something like, because, it is, it's, we can acknowledge that it's duplicative for owners as defined by the state, but it's being eliminated for all.
That's fine, if you wanna...
Okay, so, um...
That's great.
So, maybe we just say, "By eliminating the background check requirement, comma, which is duplicative of that required by the state for owners as defined by the state."
As defined in...
I like that. Let's go with that.
I'll write it out so it's actually coherent.
Okay, and then, if, I think we need to say as to testing, distributing, and retailing permits.
We can keep that, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, that change is good.
Yeah.
I'll write it all out, if you guys wanna talk about the third sentence.
So, in the, the first item one of the evidence, it says, "The changes proposed here relate only to background checks for cannabis workers and could not give rise to any potentially significant change in the environment." I just meant that, that just opens a can of worms, says, "Do we say owners as defined and workers?"
Yes.
Because the change does apply to everybody.
Yeah.
Or just eliminate...
Or why don't we just say only to background checks?
Yeah.
Yes.
Only to background checks.
Sure. Then we can comment on the workers in this next section.
Yeah, let's not even address it.
Actually, I think we need to look at number one from the lens of SEQA requirement. So, even if it's background checks for owners and workers, does that still trigger additional SEQA requirement? And the answer would be no. So, technically, it doesn't really affect what would come under SEQA, even if it's said for owners and workers.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so I think if we just take out the, for cannabis workers, because it doesn't matter who it's for, it's about background checks.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. So, what I'm proposing, this is for the public, "The proposed amendment would increase efficiencies in the testing, distributing, distributing and retailing application process by eliminating duplicative background check processes for owners as defined in such and such, removing the county requirement for workers on these sites," which is where we got that in, "and relying instead on existing requirements in state law for owners to ensure that there are no adverse or illegal conditions on their sites." And again, I guess owners as defined in. The and operators language, the state law only applies to owners, but then defines owners in a broad term broader than operators. So, I think we should just take out operators and say owners as defined. And by the way, that's where the word amendment was used in the resolution.
Sarah, are you writing something there? You can read to us, thank you.
I am. Okay, so for the, so for the first sentence of finding three, does this work? "The proposed ordinance amendment is intended to streamline county cannabis permit regulations by eliminating the local background check requirement for testing, distribution, and retailing permits, which is for owners as defined by state law already required in order to obtain a permit through the California Department of Cannabis Control." It's a little clunky, but I think it's accurate.
Yeah.
It's not the most beautiful sentence I've ever written.
You didn't specifically mention workers.
Yes.
Did you?
No, I just said we're, I said we're eliminating all local background check requirements and that background, and that background checks are already required by the state for owners as defined by the state.
Okay.
I think that's accurate.
Well, it's accurate, yeah.
And I think there's plenty of other, I mean, we're looking at two tiny pieces here of a much bigger issue that...
And as Mr. Elliott pointed out, these are, these are just to cover our bases.
And the reason I eliminated the words and local about toward the end of the third sentence is, as far as I can tell and from the answers I got during the questions, there aren't, won't be any provisions in local law.
Yes, there will no longer be any explicit requirement in county code. Now, the fact that we require the state permit before you can get ours, right? There is impliedly then a requirement that you, but you're correct, there will be no separate local requirement.
I'm fine with leaving and local.
Okay, I think it's confusing then.
It's, yeah, it's sort of circular.
Well, it's just that I, we're only talking about background checks, but if...
Yes.
I understand there are other requirements. Um, you know, if I were reading it, when I did read it and I saw and local, I thought, oh, well, that's some other background checks still required. I thought, oh, well, that's some other background checks still required. So that's why I eliminated it.
I could argue that one either way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel strongly one way or the other about it. So I think we defer to what you think is the cleanest way to.
I, I do think, I think that the fact that we've said removing, I think with Commissioner Latish's insertion of county before requirement, we're making it clear that we are eliminating the county requirement. And so I think that I would probably leave it as is with the and local, but like I said, it's, I think it's okay either way.
Commissioner Parker.
I'm giving a thumbs up.
Okay.
To what you were saying there, it seems like.
So we believe we all understand what.
Yeah, we.
Oh, I had it off.
I think it was recorded.
Well, what's proposed, so.
So I'm, I'm not sure if and local is in Commissioner Parker or out.
I think we can just leave it in.
Okay. There we go.
So I think we are ready for the recommendation. I'm not sure who's reading that. I'm looking for someone.
Well, I think the easiest thing to say would be as amended. And then we can get official language from the county council's office.
I, I will type it up so that nobody has to attempt to read my handwriting. And I can, yeah, send it to everybody in picture roll.
Perfect.
So do you want to read the recommendation as amended, Doug?
Again, it's always fun to come here.
Absolutely. I, I learn so much every time I show up here. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2024 dot zero dash 009 as amended, recommending the board supervisors adopt for proposed ordinance amendments to chapter 1791 and 1795 of the Calveras County Ordinance Code concurrently with its rescission of chapter 9.22.
So move.
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? I don't even know the order for these things anymore with our missing people and absence. So it's like three, one, zero, one.
I think technically three, three, zero with one absent.
Absent, yes.
And a vacancy.
And one vacancy, yes. I should write a little spiel up there. Are there?
You're welcome.
Define John.
Yes.
You're welcome back. We'll see you in three years.
We are so appreciative that you're doing all this work and not us.
Yeah, we appreciate the rest of it, it's not ours. Are there any no informational items? Are there any commissioner reports?
Nothing from me, no.
Neither. Any planning director reports or updates?
None, Madam Chair, but I don't know if we can, I, I just wanted to remind the commissioners that we have an item coming up, the appeal of the cell tower. It's not an agendas, agendaized item for today's meeting, but we've been receiving quite a few questions and comments. I just want to make sure that the commission is getting all those comments as well as we're getting them.
It's hard to know whether we're getting all the comments.
We're getting some.
You're getting some.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Right.
All right.
And what do you see the schedule for the ordinance being?
Oh, yes. The HAC met last week, Friday or Thursday, and the chair wants Julie to be present at the next meeting so that we can coordinate all the edits in one, in one meeting before bringing it back, bringing it before the planning commission for the first time. So we're very close.
Okay, so it might be the meeting after next?
Might be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Will certainly be after Julie returns.
Yes. It would definitely be after.
She'll be back next week.
Yes. I believe that's it, and we are adjourned at 9:36. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.